Okay, she's here. Tony S.
Here.
And Simona.
I'm here on Zoom.
Okay, and so we have a quorum, however, we are missing one person, so the alternates will be voting tonight. This is, of course, a hybrid format where people are welcome to come in person and also appear via Zoom. For those of you unfamiliar with the process here before the zoning board of appeals, there is an agenda up here. Each item will be taken based upon its number on the agenda. The applicant will have an opportunity to come in and present and testify about their application. All testimony before the zoning board of appeals is under oath. Members of the public are welcome to comment on any application. I would limit their comments to three minutes. At the end of the agenda, after each item is closed and at the end of the agenda, there'll be a time to deliberate. At that time, there's no further evidence taken, but we'll deliberate and vote. The applicants and the public can stay and wait until that time, or you can call the zoning board administrator in the morning to find out whether the application is approved or denied. With that, that brings us to item number one, Stewart Shop. I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn that to the December 13th, 2021 meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. And number two, 58 Alder Drive, again, I'll make a motion to adjourn that until December 13th. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. Then that brings us to item number three, Taco Bell Neptune Capital Investor.
Paul.
Yes?
This is Phyllis. I'd like to recuse myself for this, if that's okay.
That's okay with me.
Okay.
Tony will vote for Larry and then Simona will vote for Paul. All right, go ahead.
Good evening.
You're still under oath, so.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Dave Kaminsky for Neptune Capital Investors. May I approach and pass out?
Yeah, yes. Is there a way that that can go on the screen?
Yeah, that'll probably work when you take mine out. Sure, the camera, Roger can probably zoom in a little bit.
That good?
Yeah, this is like David Letterman or something. There you go.
So just a brief introduction. Last month, I made a presentation explaining that we're seeking a area variance to add a single sign facing to the south on the building. There are two signs going to be on the building. Mr. Grace, at that time, when I made the presentation, questioned the comment that I made as to where the Carl's Jr. sign was on the south side of the building. His memory was perfect, mine was not. And so I am bringing this photo to show exactly where the signage was. You'll see it was on this large metal piece. The variances included that sign that says Carl's Jr. It also included the big metal thing that you see on the front of the building that has the star on it. And then the two signs that face Route 9, you can barely see the one in the red that says char-boiled. Char-broiled burgers. So put that down. Our request this time is for the permitted sign, which is the sign facing Route 9 on the side of the building. Sign, which is the sign we're looking for, the area variance would be put on the tower. And I indicated that the Carl's Jr. sign was done, I was wrong. I apologize.
And my recollection was it was adjourned last time because we were waiting for the county to respond. You had an opportunity to review the county's response.
Yes, it was a matter of local concern, right?
So anything else to add?
That's all I have, sir.
Any members of the board have any additional questions?
I have one. Ms. Smith, is the Carl's Jr., that banner, is that coming off the face of the?
That whole big metal piece is coming off the entire thing. Yes, it is.
Okay, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? I just don't want any audience, anyone on Zoom.
You're on Zoom, you can unmute yourself.
Then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to item number four, Verizon Wireless Communications Facility, 9-11 Raymond Avenue. Is there someone here for that application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on Zoom, Scott Olson.
Mr. Olson, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe briefly your application?
Sure, if you wouldn't mind, I'll try to share my screen and I can also describe it. Although I don't know what you're looking at, honestly, so, but here goes anyway. So what we're looking to do is install what they call a small cell. And it's just, it's at 11 Raymond Avenue. It's in the Arlington Town Center zoning district. And what it is comprised of is generally one antenna on the roof of an existing three-story building. We will have some related equipment, which is going to be installed on the side of the penthouse wall. It's about 24 square feet total of wall space that will occupy. And let me go back, the antenna we're proposing is also on top of the the penthouse roof. And the current top of the penthouse measures about 44 feet from the ground level. The top of the antenna we're proposing is 51 feet. And this is just an aerial, again, I don't know what you're seeing there, but just it's an aerial of the building that we're proposing to put the equipment on. The penthouse is in the back portion of the property. In order to screen the equipment on the side of the penthouse, we're going to propose to put it on the the east side of the property facing Raymond Avenue. If we put it on the west side here, it might be visible a little bit this way, although there's some vegetation there. But we thought this would be the better application for this specific property. This is just an elevation view of what it would look like. You know, here's the the cantina, as we call it, it's just one antenna, it's ballast mounted. And the equipment on the side of the penthouse, you can see right here in this small little area. The reason we're here is we need a use variance. So because we're in the ATC zoning district and because that district does not authorize these types of facilities, we need to obtain a use variance from the zoning board, similar to what we did with the Marina site, maybe eight months ago or so. And as the board went through the process before, there is a very specific public utility variance standard. It's different than your traditional variance standard. The unnecessary hardship test does not apply, it is a very specific three-part test for the public utility standard. We must demonstrate to you there's a gap in service. The proposed location remedies that gap and the facility represents a minimal intrusion to the community. We believe that we satisfy all three, we've got a bunch of information in the record to demonstrate that. This is just a quick visual desktop view shed, which is intended to show where this, the locations from which the facility will be visible. And it's, although it's a little difficult to see, it's in the green areas, the shaded green that we've added. So a little bit up here to the north and, you know, back here to the west. This field here and just a little bit on Raymond Avenue and over here also. So fairly, fairly not visible, but certainly not very intrusive in our opinion. And I just want to quickly explain. The RF engineer, he couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately, but this red geometry shape here, I don't know what it is, but it's the search area. It's basically the area that the RF engineer determined we need to be in that location to serve the purpose. And the purpose of this site is to increase capacity of our network. And this is just an excerpt from his report, the engineer Mike Crosby. The main reason that we're here is because what we call the East Poughkeepsie site, which is the flagpole located at town hall. Because it's a flagpole and because things have changed so much since the, in terms of technology, since the flagpole was installed, we cannot install the typical components that would increase the capacity of that site. So this little chart here, maybe a little hard to see, but at the bottom of the chart, there's this little red dashed line. And that's 100% capacity of our system. This purple line are all instances, you know, in January and April, July through January 21, all showing huge increases above and beyond what our capacity is. So we need this to try to diversify the network or densify the network with increasing our capacity. This is just another form of a capacity chart that shows you that, again, in this case, the red line is sort of in the middle of the chart. And it just shows you we are going above, you know, sometimes we're below, but we're at that 100 mark or above an awful lot, and that's given us, giving our network a kind of a little bit of a stomach ache there. So one of the last things I'll talk about, and I'm sure you're familiar with this, just we provided in Exhibit 6, a health and safety report that confirms that this facility will be in full compliance with the FCC emission requirements. And because of that, the board is not permitted to look at health effects based on RF emissions because we're in full compliance with basically the, all the FCC requirements. So with that, I can stop sharing and see if there are any questions. Thank you.
Because of the hypothetical nature of your application, I think we're, you know, suggested the board that we hire an expert to review your experts' findings, but I do have a couple of questions just initially. Are we going to disguise this antenna as a tree or a flagpole?
This one, no. So the antenna in this one, the antenna is actually inside of what we call, it's like a sheath. It's, that's why we call it a can ten, it's like in a can. So you don't actually see the antenna, it's just like a white, kind of off-white sheath that surrounds the antenna at the top of the penthouse.
Okay. At this time, is there anyone from the, well, anyone from the board have any questions?
I just have one question. You mentioned that the flagpole at the town hall is not sufficient to perform and meet the needs. Will this supplement the flagpole or will this replace it?
It's going to supplement it. So what it's going to do, it's going to create kind of what I'll call a local hotspot in this area. And by doing that, then all the people that are in the area that will use that service will use this site specifically. So that will take away, otherwise those people were using the site at the town hall. But town hall is becoming so congested because of that. So by taking the people that are in this area off of the town hall site, we can then free up capacity for that site.
All right, anyone from the public who has any questions regarding this application? All right, nothing in the audience, anyone on Zoom? All right, then Lisa. So I simply make a motion that we should hire an expert to review their experts' findings.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And if you want to, specifically, I don't know if the board had a chance to look at the expert we recommended. But I think that he's a good choice.
And that's who we used on the last one, right?
No.
No.
Is it somebody else? We had a little trouble, if you recall, I don't know, we've talked about it very much here, but with just a contracting insurances and things like that with the other gentleman who we worked with last time. So although he was quite good to work with, it didn't really work out well for the town in terms of just getting an agreement done. So we looked for someone else, and this is where we found HDR to help us out. And if you guys are good with it, then I will bring that to the town board at the next town board meeting so we could hire them.
All right, then I'll make a motion to hire HDR as a technical expert to review this application. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion carries, and then I'll make a motion to adjourn this. Is one month enough?
I think, I don't know, Lisa, you talked to him about timing, will December work for him or?
I think it will work, so what I would do is adjourn it for now till December. And if we find out that it doesn't work, then we can adjourn in December. But I would hate to lose the extra month if we didn't have to.
Sure.
All right, in that case, then I'll make a motion to adjourn this to the December 13th meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion carries.
Paul, can you just, for the record, specify who the voting member was, whether it was Tony D. or Simona on the, those two motions?
I think it was Tony S.
So, sorry, yes, Tony S. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item number five. Cary Apple Yard, 23 Bryant Road, this is an area variance request for construction of a covered patio to be located three and a half feet from the property line, requiring a variance of six and a half feet.
Mr. and Mrs. Apple Yard, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
So in our area, we, we have a lot of high winds. And I've tried several things in my backyard with umbrellas. You know, different things just to have an outdoor place for my family. And we have such a wind tunnel that I've ruined most of my umbrellas. I've had my grill flip over three times, so I need something that is stronger for the wind. And so this patio would, the structure would help with the wind and be able to be outside with my family. The reason why we want to put it where it is is because I have a small valley view with a small sunset and it would continue behind it. I did talk to my neighbor Joe, who is on the side that would be affected, and he has no problems, and he did give me a letter that should be in your packet saying that he has no problem with the variance.
Okay, and when you describe it as a covered patio, we saw some drawings that it's really, there are just some joys that run parallel to the patio, but it's open?
Yes.
Okay.
I haven't, I wanted to put something, I'm not really, I haven't gotten definite, but it would be something like maybe like tin over those wood pieces or maybe some clear plastic, just to cover the area. I am definite about that, but it would be just something to cover, so if it does rain, if the wind comes along, it would be attached and it would stay a little bit drier and it wouldn't fly away.
All right, is there a copy of that drawing, that architectural drawing in the main file? In the building permit? Okay. All right, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony D.?
No questions.
Tony S.?
No questions.
Diane? Simona?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience, and I don't see anyone on Zoom. So let me ask, I'm sorry, just let me ask a couple of questions. I know that you said you wanted to maintain that position for the site, the view, but are there any reasons it can't go anyplace else in your backyard that would not require variance?
On the other side of my property, I have wires that go to the quarry. And that side, and also with that side, it's not the side that I can come out of my house. So this side is the side that I can come out my back door and go to the site. The other side, I have like a split level, so it would be, I wouldn't be able to go out that side. And then with it being the quarry, they come through that way with the trucks to repair the wires in the back. So I can't put anything there that would block the trucks to come and maintenance the wires and stuff in the back.
Okay, then those are all the questions I have. I don't hear anything else, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to number six, Stephen Hawley, 19 James Street. This is an area variance for side yard setback for the construction of a deck to be located 17 feet from the property line, requiring a variance of three feet. Is there someone here for that application? Come on up and have a seat. Why don't you state your name, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, Stephen G. Hawley.
And if you pull the microphone a little closer to you.
Yeah.
Mr. Hawley, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Sure, this is on the side of my house. I want to build a deck and the deck will be set back actually further than the house is. But it's not 20 feet from the property line as the requirements say. Quite honestly, there's no houses on my street that are 20 feet back from the property lines. The house was built in '34 and it's an old neighborhood. The deck is replacing two small decks that I've taken down. They were very old and I felt they were unsafe. I think this will be an improvement to my house and the neighborhood. And I don't see any, any issues, any negative effect on the neighborhood.
Okay, and just to confirm that, actually, this deck will be set back farther away from the side lot than the main part of the house.
Yes.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony D.
No questions.
Tony S.
No questions.
Diane? Phyllis?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? And there's no one in the audience, I don't see anyone on Zoom. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Okay.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to item number seven, Anthony Venetosa, Venetosi, 6 Brady Place. Would you state your name?
Anthony Venetosi.
Okay.
Mr. Venetosi, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, what do you want to do?
I'm looking to, I have a small house, it's 600 square feet. It's a two-bedroom, I'm looking to put a third bedroom on the house. And in doing so, the existing bathroom is very tiny in the center of the house. And part of the addition is going to be relocating the existing bathroom. So my sideline setbacks do not allow me to do that without variance. I've got plenty of backyard, but not a lot of side yard.
Okay, and is it fair to say that this isn't going to encroach on the side lot line anymore than the existing house does?
Exactly.
Okay, and what about the pool?
The pool's been removed, the pool was removed prior to me purchasing.
Okay. All right, Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony D.
No questions.
Tony S.
No questions.
Diane? Phyllis?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Anyone from the audience has any comment on this application? I see no one in the audience and I don't see anyone on Zoom. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to number eight, Michael and Tina, Matt? Okay, 290 Spackenkill Road, this is an area variance for a side yard setback with construction of a new garage and kitchen to be located 11 feet from the property line, requiring a nine-foot variance.
Mr. and Mrs. Mignon, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Yes.
Okay, why don't you describe the application?
We are looking to put a two-car garage, which, as you mentioned, is going to go out to the side, asking, you know, or needing that additional space in order to accommodate a two-size, you know, garage, as well as bumping our kitchen forward. You know, I have a family with children and everybody's driving and I live on a main road. So the safety of having additional spaces to put cars would be extremely helpful. That's really about it. I mean, mostly safety issue is why we are looking to do it. My husband's a police officer who has a take-home police car and, you know, it's not unknown that, you know, we've been places in public where people have commented that they know he's a police officer. So it's kind of like not something I kind of want to advertise.
Okay, and how far, the garage that exists now, how far away from the side lot is that now? So how great of an encroachment into the side yard will this addition?
Another six feet out.
Another six feet? Okay. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony D.
No questions.
Tony S.
No questions.
Diane? Phyllis?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? I don't, I don't see anyone, and I don't see anyone on Zoom. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you.
Can I take a short break? Do you want to go right through the three?
This is 29 minutes, let's just push through it here.
All right, so let's see who's here.
They are still here.
The folks on Zoom are here.
Oh, and Michael. That's. All right, so let's talk about item number five. 23 Bryant Road.
Yep.
Okay, anybody have any concerns about this?
They were there, it was a pretty good wind coming up that, that road. All things around. The neighbors apparently are okay with it, the neighbor.
There's a fence that goes alongside that will cover most of the project. And she said that she can't put it elsewhere on the property.
Right away, yes.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't see, I think it's pretty consistent with the neighborhood.
It's a small patio there anyway.
Yeah.
Which.
You have a gazebo.
Not bothering me, but I'm fine with it.
Okay. Anybody else have any concerns? Phyllis, tomorrow?
No concerns.
Okay. All right, so then Tony S., you'll be voting on this. So Christine, if you would mind making a motion.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing.
Let me, let me offer some, yeah, let me offer some findings. Before you accept them. Whether an undesirable change would reduce in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting of the variance. This appears to be consistent with other neighbors, and there's an existing patio there that doesn't seem to impact on the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some methods feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance based upon the testimony. of the applicant that this is the side that this is the only side that they can use based upon the entrance to the house and the easement on the other side of the property. I don't think there's any other way than an area variance for them for them to obtain their desired benefit. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, in numerically, it's substantial, but in terms of the actual physical location, there's a fence that goes along the right along the side of it. And I don't think that I think that minimizes the impact of this application. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, there's no evidence before us that it will have any physical or environmental effects. And whether alleged difficulty was self created. It certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the application. And I would offer those fines. So if you want to go ahead.
I move that the board approved the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? On this one, Tony, you'll be voting.
Okay.
So all those in favor signify by I.
I.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries 70. Okay, number eight, 290 Spackenkill Road. Anybody have any concerns about this one? Then then let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change would produce in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties would be created by the granting of the variance. This application appears to be consistent with other properties in the neighborhood, and I don't believe it'll have any adverse effect on the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. There's no other way to extend the garage and that portion of the house without encroaching more onto the side lot line. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, the overall variance request may be substantial numerically, but however, is just another six feet or so encroaching into the side lot line and does not appear to be. That seems to minimize the significance of the or the impact of the area variance. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the impact or adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. There's no evidence before us that that will have any adverse physical or environmental effects. And whether alleged difficulty was self created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the application. And I would offer those fines. Okay, do you mind making a motion? Yeah.
I moved that the board approve the request for area variance support on item six. This decision is eight, I screwed me up. Eight, this decision, this decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair.
All right, is there any discussion on this one? Tony, again, I'm going to ask you to vote on this one. Okay, any any concerns?
I have one, and I'm sorry to bring it up late. Picture that roof is going to be toward your neighbor, correct? Looking at the house is going to be. From the back, so you're not. That's okay, just. Right. Okay, so that's my concern. As long as it's not put water in his yard.
Okay.
That's you're right.
In that case, all those in favor signify by I.
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 Are there any opposed? And that motion carries. Call the zoning administrator tomorrow or stop by tomorrow, right?
Thank you.
All right, good luck. Okay, all right. So that I think that brings us back to.
We got Carrie and Michelle or Michelle.
We got them. They were number five.
Yeah, that's it, right?
Yeah, so we can go to the top.
Okay, so that brings us to item number three. Anybody have any concerns about this one?
Take that. Only. Yeah, top, no, aside off. Put up a very small sign, so. Real issues with it.
All right, and so both Tony S. And Simona will be voting on this one. Okay, and Phyllis has refused herself. So I moved that the ZBA determined that there's no other involved agencies to declare itself to be lead agency for the action. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by I. Any opposed? That motion carries. And I also move that the ZBA determine the action would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and issue a negative declaration. A discussion? All those in favor signify by I. Any opposed? That motion carries. And then and D, you might make a motion about this one. And there are, there is a stamp.
Okay, I I move that the board approve of the request for an area variance set forth in item number three. And this decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by the board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth in the staff report provided. So.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one? Okay, yeah, I think it'd be an improvement, right? So.
Well, yeah, that's that's pretty good.
All right, all those in favor signify by I. Any, any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
It's nice to see an empty building. Be reopened.
Yes. All right, so that brings us to item number six, 19 James Street. Is an request for an area variance, proposing a new deck, requiring a variance of three feet. Let me offer, anybody have any problems with this one? Then let me offer these, whether an undesirable change would produce the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties would be created by a granting of the variance. This is a replacement of an existing deck. And therefore, I don't think it'll have any change in the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. There's no other way to do this as the building itself approaches in the side lot area. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, perhaps numerically, but in effect, actuality, actually the deck is farther away from the side lot line than than the primary building. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. There's no evidence before us that this will have any physical or environmental effects. And whether the alleged difficulty was self created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the application. And I would offer those fines. Okay. Tony S., do you mind making?
Okay, sure. Okay, I moved that the board approved the request for a area variance in item number six. Decision is based on our beauty application. The testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visit by board members. And we adopt the findings set forth by the chair.
All right, any discussion on this one? All right, all those in favor signify by I.
I.
All right, any any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. All right, this brings us to item number seven, Anthony Venetosi, six Brady Place. This is an area variance request for a side yard variance for new addition located 14 feet from the side property, requiring a variance of six feet. Anyone have any concerns about this one? Then I would offer these files. Whether an undesirable change will produce in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granted variance. In the character of the neighborhood is going to be improvement to the home. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. There's no other way based upon the narrowness of the lot and the position of the main house to achieve it any other way. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, perhaps numerically, but in fact, this is encroaching no further into the side lot than the than the primary building. Whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence before us this will have any physical or environmental effects. And whether the alleged difficulty was self created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny it. And so I would offer those fines. Okay. Diane, do you mind making this motion?
I move that the board approved.
Tony, you'll, once again, will be 20.
Voting again.
I move that the board approved the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings that are set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor signify by I.
I.
Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. And I think that brings us to the end of the agenda.
Can we stay a while longer?
If you like.
I have my heart set on going.
Okay, in that case, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by I.
I.
All right, any opposed? That motion carries. I'll see you next month.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.